All right, welcome everyone to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is August 24th, 2015, the time is 7:30. Our first order of business, as always, is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join me.
(inaudible)
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 Will the clerk take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Haley.
Here.
Councilwoman Clough.
Here.
Councilman Bailey.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I make a motion that we approve item number four, A, B, and C from the work sessions.
A second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
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 That carries unanimously. Item five on our agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any? All right.
I make a motion that we approve item five, all the items that are here within on the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
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 That carries unanimously as well. Item six on our agenda tonight is licenses. Six A is a resolution granting a firearms and ammunition license to TG Holdings LLC doing business as Universal Firearms and Militaria, 265 Main Street Wakefield. Application by Tim Gray. Is Tim here tonight? How are you doing, sir? Good evening. State your name and where you live and...
I am, my name is Tim Gray and I am the president of TG Holdings and I live in Kingston.
Great. So we all know, of course, Universal Firearms for a long time.
Yeah.
What, do you plan on doing anything differently with the business?
I think a lot of it has been just carrying on the tradition that Henry Almonte has had there for thirty years now and Hank's going to remain on as a part-time employee. So there'll be some slight changes but I, but I think really it's maintaining his reputation, which, which is really a great reputation in this area and doing things the right way and being a good business neighbor on Main Street and for the town. So, no drastic changes.
Any questions from the council?
I think that's great that he's going to stay on and be a good transition for him. He's been such a successful business owner there for so long.
Yeah.
I think will be an asset to you starting the business too.
He's, he's an amazing man, Korean War veteran and I think one of the things that we're trying to do is maybe do a little bit more with honoring veterans, not just having a gun shop but, but having a place where we can come in and do some things with veterans of all wars and I run a foundation for World War II honoring World War II veterans and I'd like to incorporate that into it as well. So we really plan on being every bit as good as it was under Henry and a few cosmetic things here and there but maintaining what he's built over the years.
Excellent. Any other questions? All right.
I make a motion that we approve under item six A.
Second. Second. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
License B is a resolution granting victualing and holiday sales licenses to Swirls and Scoops Incorporated, 1922 Kingstown Road. This is application by Lisa...
De Maria.
De Maria. Lisa, are you here? Okay. How are you doing?
I'm great, how are you?
Feeling good.
Good.
Say your name for the record, where you live, and then tell us a little bit about Swirls and Scoops.
I'll let my husband take over.
My name is Gerald De Maria, I live in Wakefield, Rhode Island. Swirls and Scoops is going to be taking over the current Lickety Splits location over on Kingstown Road where the current owner has been there for the past fourteen years and she's looking to downsize and as you may know she has another location in Richmond which she'll be hanging on to but we continue to keep, intent is to continue to keep this going, under a new name.
Any questions? How long...
Well, I, I had asked you when I came out there if you're going to plan on staying open year-round, what your hours are going to be.
Yeah, that's the intention, that's why she doesn't, the current owner doesn't currently stay open year-round. She generally closes, you know, mid-October and reopens in mid-March. We're going to try to stay open year-round, perhaps maybe around the holidays of Christmas maybe shut down but other than that, we plan to be open. So come on down.
Thank you.
Very exciting. I bet you have some kids that are very eager to be working there.
It's amazing how many of the friends' children are now very excited for free ice cream. So, we'll have that going for us, I guess.
You'll have the whole neighborhood there, right?
Yeah, that's the plan.
That's awesome.
Great.
I make a motion to approve item number six B.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
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 Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item seven is a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining citizen views on community development, housing needs, and program performance relative to filing a fiscal year 2015 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application. The town is eligible to apply for $250,000 in funds for the purpose of undertaking activities which will result in the following benefits to low and moderate income families and individuals. One, the provision of activities which may include any of the below consistent with a community revitalization plan. Two, provision of or the improvement of housing opportunities. Three, the provision of employment opportunities. Four, the provision of community facilities improvements. And five, the provision of services. Steve, could you just tell us a little more?
Yes, this is the first of two public hearings that'll be held relative to the filing of a community development block grant for the town. South Kingstown's participated in the community development block grant program since 1985. Since that time, grants have provided almost $4.9 million in support to many of the local human service agencies in the area. During the current year, the town had obtained program funding for the housing rehabilitation program, which offers grants to fix code violations on single-family and multifamily housing. We'd received funding for operating support for Johnny Cake Center and for the Kenyon Avenue Permanent Support of Housing project. This year, we've sent out letters to any of the agencies that have received grant participation funding in the past, back in the beginning of August, August 3rd, I think it was, and we've indicated to them that we need to have applications submitted for program year 2015 by August 28th. Once we receive the funding request proposals from the agencies, they'll then be reviewed and prioritized and will be reviewed by the planning board who will then provide a recommendation to the council. This will then come back to the council on September 14th for the council to approve a final grant application. As noted in the agenda this evening, there's five specific purposes. They're to really deal with low and moderate income persons, looking at housing, employment opportunities, as well as services provided to, to those that frequent the various social service agencies. One of the things that will change this year is that since 1985, we've maintained a funding on a yearly basis for housing rehabilitation grant program. We will not be submitting one for this year because under the new regulations the state has, we can work off of a state set aside of funds to be able to provide those code enforcement assistance without having to impact the $250,000 that we can write for. I do want to caution that while we can write an application for as much as $250,000, last year's funding level was $136,000. There'll probably be substantially less available for communities below that $250,000 threshold. But we will review any and all of the applications that are submitted by the various agencies and have that back to the council for the second public hearing on September 14th. This evening, if there's members of, of the public that wish to express comments or concerns or suggestions for potential elements within the application itself, they could come forward at this time.
And if there were other agencies in town that wanted to participate in the CDBG, how...
As long as they can meet the mission statements that are expressed within the grant program itself, then those applications would be entertained.
Are there any comments from the council this time? Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Is it added to the agenda?
This is specific to this CDB.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Teresa Tansey, I live at 57 Hillcrest Road and I wasn't sure if this was an appropriate application but we've been talking about having the bus shelter added somewhere on High Street and had asked the town for matching funds from the Peace Dale Neighborhood Revitalization Incorporated to do the trans art, so blending the transit needs with an artistic rendition of a bus shelter. And I just wasn't sure, I mean, it's a small ask, it's under $10,000 and I wasn't sure because it has to do with employment opportunities and allowing people to get to and from work.
I think as long as it's in a target area that could serve low and moderate income individuals, it certainly would be an application that could be entertained.
Okay. And then there was a point in time when through private funding, there was a kind of a circulator that happened from Memorial Day through Labor Day. The bus kind of helped with tourists who were staying at the local hotels. It helped with people wanting to get to and from work. It ran from, I want to say, nine in the morning until nine, 10 o'clock at night and it was run by some of the people from the local chamber as well as people who were managing, management at some of the local hotels. It ran between Marigazet and South Kingstown. I don't know what their overall budget was but I know that there is a transit need beyond what Ripta is able to provide within this southern part of the state. So, again, that's just something that, you know, perhaps I could meet with you to talk a little bit more about that and reach out to some of the other people because I think that we do need, if we can't get the state to provide it down here, maybe we can through other funds reinvigorate something that was established and very successful. So, thank you.
Was that, was that the trolley?
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
And it was free to anyone who wanted to ride it and it was paid for by some of the local businesses who either sponsored signs that were within it. They were allowed to put little cards in a rack to support their business within that offered coupons and things like that. Stopped at all the hotels, stopped at all the local beaches. I know that a lot of kids took it to the cinema, you know, so it brought kids from downtown up to South County Commons and, you know, it was used by locals, young and old. It also, you know, went up as far as the muse, so I know that some people use it as an alternative to driving and drinking. So I think it serves a lot of need in the community and if this were a way to kind of reestablish that, I think that would be a great opportunity. So, thank you.
Steve, for clarification, we would need an agency to propose that specific activity that meets the mission of the...
We would need an agency or one of the municipal departments could act as, as a sponsor on the various programs.
Any other comments from the public at this time? No. So is this a case where since we're going to come back to this issue, we don't close this public hearing? Do we...
I'd ask you to close this public hearing and to adopt the, the resolution as presented in the August 14 memorandum on the subject.
First, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing and move forward.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I'd need a motion for this resolution.
I make a motion that the town council hereby direct staff to prepare the CDBG fiscal year 2015 application and undertake eligible activities in a grant amount not to exceed $250,000. Further, to authorize the town clerk to order for advertisement a public hearing relative to the filing of the CDBG 2000 fiscal year 2015 application to be held on September 14th, 2015, for the purposes of reviewing the draft application and obtaining citizens' views on the proposed activities.
Just one clarification, it's a program year, not fiscal year.
Oh, I'm sorry. Programming year, my mistake.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. And that brings us to item eight on our agenda tonight, communications. Item eight B is a communication dated July 28th, 2015 from Joseph Matthews, Scout Master Emeritus from Troop 44 Matunik, requesting a congratulatory letter to Benjamin Matthews for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and inviting council members to attend the award ceremony. It's been received and placed on file. What do we want to do with it?
We talked about this at the work session and I would like to direct Dale to prepare a proclamation and have members of this town council be there for the ceremony on the 27th at 2:00 to be able to honor and recognize the Eagle Scout.
So we can do that, Dale? All right.
We just need a second.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Item eight D is a letter dated July 29th, 2015 from State Representative Doreen Costa, District 31, requesting support for saving the Quonset Air Museum and its aircraft and exhibits from destruction. And a resolution adopted August 3rd, 2015 by the Exeter Town Council in support of this request. It's been received and placed on file. What do we want to do with it?
We talked about this also in the work session and I would like to make a motion that we support this resolution and ask Dale to draft whatever correspondence is necessary to complete that endeavor.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Item E, under communications, is a communication dated August 6th, 2015 from Michael McIntyre, Chairman of the South Kingstown Democratic Town Committee, submitting that party's candidate for consideration of appointment to the canvassing authority. It's been received and placed on file. Dale, is this the time in the meeting when we would make that appointment or we wait for the appointments?
We talked about this at the work session too. I make a motion that we accept the letter that was submitted for the applicant John Patrick Shanley Jr. to become part of the canvassing authority and I would ask that we appoint him at this time and have Dale send out the necessary correspondence.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. And that brings us to item nine on our agenda tonight, which is comments from interested citizens. This is your opportunity to come up to the podium, tell us what you think we should be doing and just say your name into the microphone and where you're from and we'll take it from there.
This is your opportunity.
Hi, good evening, my name's Holly Higgins Gilmore. I live on Shanick Road at the corner of Gravely Hill. The reason why I'm here tonight is basically there's a, if you guys don't mind, can I show you, can I be first, can I be added to the agenda?
We don't know what the subject is yet.
I feel, yeah, okay. There is a, there's a development that's being built on the corner of Gravely and Shanick. It's a, oh, I'm sorry. It's a senior development of 302 manufactured homes that's been in the works, I guess, since 1999. It's a 55 and, 55 and over community. This, this project, I guess, has been kind of hidden for quite some time. Recently, from a personal view, I came home from vacation to see a massive road put in the end of my road. So I went to town hall to see what this was and this is the, the map that I saw. It's a massive, massive development with a nine-hole golf course, which, fine, I understand that there's going to be development in our town. However, they're putting the main entrance of this development at the, at the end of Shanick and Gravely. Right now, where we live, the potholes, the traffic from the Rathgeller, the increased traffic, it's, our community up there cannot handle a massive, massive influx of traffic. Right now, they're proposing 302 homes. If, if there are two people that live in each one of those homes, 604 people, so if every single person has a car, that's 1,208 possible passes down that road a day. I have two small children, this is very important to me, there are plenty of children that are on that road. Right now, that road is very, very small, it's very narrow, there's a lot of speeding. There's, there's no room for this increased traffic. It would be like walking my children in a stroller on Route 1. I have, I have the map here that has the plans to show you, if I could be added to the agenda. I also have my neighbor that's, that lives on Gravely who's also very concerned.
We did discuss this matter prior to the, to the session tonight, we were just given the maps earlier and we did discuss it. If we added it to the agenda, it's not something we could take any action on, so I don't know if it would be much use for us to add it to the agenda. We can definitely hear all your input but it's not something we can do anything about.
Okay. When you, I don't, do you, what do you mean you can't, do you mean just tonight because I haven't been officially added or just on down the line?
No, the way it works is you need to have public notice of things that are going to be on the agenda that actually you can take action on.
Okay.
So if we added it to the agenda, we could, we could discuss it but we already did discuss it prior to the meeting. Mike, you want to...
Okay, you go ahead.
No, I was going to say, clearly, anyone has the opportunity to come to the mic and you can hear, they can't take any action. This obviously is something that's already been approved a long time ago. This council couldn't change it even if they wanted to change it but if you have specific issues you want to share with them, if you think that there's a town road, for instance, that needs upgrading or...
Okay.
They can certainly hear that. They have the ability to refer the matter to the administration, which then can have Department of Public Works look at it, et cetera, but in terms, just so you understand, in terms of what has been proposed and what's, that's already...
I understand that. My concern is the traffic study for this development was done in 1998. That's seventeen years ago. This is before the Rathgeller was redone, this is before a couple other developments were put on Shanick Road into Charlestown. There's a huge, huge issue here. It's not just, I understand that there's, there's a lot of building going on and there have been permits. These permits were issued back in 1999. It's 2015. I think it's, I think it's a major concern for the entire neighborhood. Do you want to speak to this?
You can provide, if you have that.
Give it to the town clerk. I'm part of the record.
Good evening, my name is Vicki Cummings and I reside at 479 Gravely Hill Road, South Kingstown. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I noticed that something that came out of your mouth, Mr. Collins, was that we need public notice. Well, I feel that the community of Gravely Hill and Shanick have not had an opportunity to even look at these plans, let alone even know that it was going on. I too, my husband and I came home from, at a trip and we drove up the road, up our road, past Shanick and we noticed that just hundreds and hundreds of trees were just bulldozed, no regard for anything, any kind of, you know, animals, deer. It's really pretty sad. I drive by there every day when I go to the gym and I noticed that in that development as well as the new developments that are going in in Charlestown, right on Shanick Road as well, I noticed the deer just kind of standing there and looking early in the morning. It's really disgusting, I think. I do have to thank Mr. O'Neill, I don't know even who that is but I assume he's probably here, for his argument to the zoning board in March of 2007 to reopen the public hearing regarding this development, although after discussion, it was the consensus of that zoning board to not reopen the public hearing. I moved to Gravely Hill in 2005. I was told and made aware of this project and I was told by a neighbor at that point, Tony Robinson, that they had formed a group of people from Gravely Hill in and around 1999 to fight it and at that point, it was kind of a moot point. I'm really concerned because as I drive throughout the town, I see other signs, orange signs that are quite visually in your face, if you will, talking about a South Kingston planning meeting for development in certain areas. I know there's a couple over on Route 2 that are within the South Kingston township. I have been there since 2005 and there has never, ever been anything, any kind of notification or indication of any 302-unit housing project, trailer park, it is manufactured home, it's a trailer park, being put in our neighborhood. We are on well water, my husband is a huge golfer, I'm a golfer. We don't need any more golf courses in Rhode Island. There are golf courses going broke. My concern is for our wells runoff. I now understand the DEM have issued their permits. Again, I have to say, I moved here from New York City and chose the area because of its beauty and where we settled, we've put a lot of money into our home and I'm really, really concerned when a taxpayer has no idea that something like that is going in their backyard. I, I just, it's unnerving, actually. The other thing that I, I'm disappointed in is when I called some council members who seem to have little or no knowledge about this project. Again, where I come from, that's what elected officials are for. They know what's going on in the community and they're there to help the constituents, we, the taxpayers, we, the people who elect members of this council. I'm also disappointed when I made calls to the town for the attitudes that I got. I was told, "Well, who did you speak to? Who do you know?" Quite frankly, I know no one and to me, that's a moot point. Who cares who I spoke to? It doesn't matter. Again, is this Rhode Island at its worst? Again, we see this in the news with Rhode Island over and over and over again. For, I'm concerned about safety issues, the traffic issues. I called the building and roads, I guess it's road, I don't know what, what the department issue or name is for South Kingstown, but anyway, I called someone because the potholes were so terrible at the end of Gravely Hill going on, onto Post Road, that you had to go into the other lane of traffic in order to get around those potholes. When I placed that call, the person who answered the phone said, "Well, I'm so happy that you called because we don't get up to Gravely Hill very much." Real concern when there's a 302-unit project going in there. Speeding issues, huge. My husband and I had a car that hit our neighbor's mailbox, smashed smithereens, crossed the center line, hit our tree in our front woods, and flipped over. That car was not doing 25 miles per hour and that was a Saturday morning. Since we've lived there, we've seen more and more tourists come, they're taking the trails that are down at the end of Gravely Hill. We see more and more tourists, more and more cyclists, more and more walkers, runners. Again, a huge concern. Last fall, there was a rash of car break-ins on Gravely Hill Road. Everyone said they were shocked, they had never, ever heard of that happening.
Excuse me, Vicki. I just try to keep people to five minutes during the
Okay. I'm almost done. Officer 31 came to our house the other day and explained to my husband that there is only one South Kingston police car assigned to Gravely Hill, Shanick Road, and Greenhill Beach area. Again, I don't know. And the other thing, my last point is, I understand we can't stop development, but my other concern is the need for a 55-plus community. It's my understanding that it does not behoove residents 55 and over, especially retirees, to remain in the state of Rhode Island as they retire. We all know that. That's not shocked anybody. The other things that are being done right now are studies indicating that a lot of these 55-plus communities across the country are going broke because we are now looking at baby boomers. We're not talking about the war, World War II generation now. We're talking about baby boomers, the sandwich generation. What's happening is, we are staying in our homes for lack of funds and/or because we have aging parents, and we have children that are coming back to nest because there are no jobs in the country. So again, to tear up that much land, to disrupt a really nice community, which probably in another hundred years will be the beach community, as we all know, yeah, Gravely Hill could, Gravely Hill could become the beach community at that point. And it's just, it's very sad. But again, I think the saddest part for me is owning a home in this state and feeling discounted when I call my elected officials or my town government. And also to just realize that what everybody says in the news about Rhode Island is most likely true. It's very sad. Thank you.
I just want to add, I'd just like to add one more thing with the traffic study. If you do have a chance to look at it, if you could just review that, the way it describes Shanick and the Gravely Hill area is not what it is today. If, if this does go through, which I understand, I can't stop development, I, you know, it is what it is, but I feel like the town should be held responsible for implementing sidewalks in that area. I mean, it's a walkable community. I run that road three times, four times a week with my kids in a double stroller, and I have to navigate around potholes, and I have to pull off the road for speeding cars every single time for my own safety. I'm a homeowner. I'm a taxpayer. I work in, I work in the town. So I feel like it's something that, that does need to be addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm confident that the Planning Board and the Planning Department will be reviewing the traffic study. I understand that that's a surprise that nobody wants to get. If it happened in my backyard, I would feel the same as you. Are there any other public comments tonight?
I always forget to do that, and I'm like this. My name is Doral Beasley. I live in Kingston. This is my first visit to this council. So you guys must be doing a good job, because I don't usually come and complain, so. The theme of my brief comments tonight could have come from the classic Clint Eastwood spaghetti western, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So I'm gonna start out with the good. I may not get to the ugly tonight, but you'll hear something about the bad, anyway. I would first like to commend the work of the South Kingstown Public, Public Works Department, the Town Engineering Section, the Kingston Water District, and all of the construction companies and contractors who were involved with reconstructing Biscuit City Road. I've lived on that road. My folks moved down there when I was 15, so, wow, over 50 years. And the road was in horrible shape. I'm a biker, so leaving my house and then biking to the end of the road, 138 used to be, by the time I was down there, my teeth were rattling. But it's wonderful now. I really appreciate the work that they did. The bad has to do with the upcoming special election to fill the vacant seat up there. And if somebody's already brought this up at a previous council meeting, I apologize, but I haven't heard anything or read anything in the paper, so I'm gonna address it. I don't think this election, this election shouldn't have been necessary. It's taken place because of how our charter is written regarding what's to happen when vacancies take place in one of our two elected board, one of our two elected entities, either the town council or the school committee. And I'm gonna paraphrase it, but it says something like, if the vacancy occurs and there's more than one year left in the term of, of the vacant seat, then a special election is required. Now, I did a little research on this. I called the Rhode Island Election Committee up there. And it's, it's different from town to town, but like in Richmond, they, they have four-year terms, I think, for their council, but it's worded that the highest vote getter after, you're gonna choose the number you need, and then the highest vote getter, when you have a vacancy, would get a vacant seat. In our town, since we only have two-year terms for the council, so every two-year terms, we elect a whole council. And every two years, we also elect between one and however many open seats come available on the school committee. So every two years, we're, we're having a general election in South Kingstown, and we're asking people to come forward. They're coming forward. They're spending their money. They're putting themselves out there. They're putting up their signs when we have an election. Now, in 20, the last presidential election we had in this town, 64% of the eligible voters in town went, went to the polls and cast a ballot. That dropped to 49% last fall in the general election. And the special election that this took place to fill the representative seat in District 33 had dropped to 20% of the eligible people eligible to vote, it turned out. And the month before that, in May, when they had the primary, it was a 9%. So first of all, it seems there's a fairness issue here, because to make, in that case, it's a little different, because in the representative 33, we're not, I'm not talking about the State House positions. I'm talking about what positions open up in town. Since we elect people every two years, especially for this year, the last election is less than a year behind when this vacancy occurred. The sixth-place vote getter should be getting that position. We shouldn't have to have another election. Now, of course, the only way this gets changed is our charter would have to change. Now, our charter hasn't been changed officially since 2006. And I'm not sure if there's a state regulation that, that every so often that asks, you have the charter commission or whatever. I'm not sure if it's a decade, but I'm thinking that, I don't know if you can just change one thing in a charter and have it on a ballot, or you have to go and do the whole charter commission thing and have the whole thing looked at again, whatever has to happen. But I think we need to consider doing that in South Kingstown. I'd also like to see, if that was to happen, that, that we consider term limits for, for elected positions in town. I would, thinking around four, four terms, either consecutive or not consecutive, for either the council or, or the school committees, plenty. You know, you get in there too, stay in there too long, you get a little bit complacent, or you think, you know, it's kind of like your job, or
Excuse me, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna leave, but maybe you wouldn't have a 17-year veteran of one committee come and tell you how to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments at this time? All right. We'll move on to the town manager's report in that case?
I've gone over all of the issues with the council in pre-session. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to address those at this time. I did want to mention that I do have a meeting scheduled with CRMC tomorrow morning relative to ongoing discussions in Mattoonik. I'll be joined there with coastal staff and property owners that butt the shoals coming back to the ocean mist and the carpenter property. That'll be at 9:00 tomorrow morning.
And there is also a, a master plan meeting tomorrow night in Mattoonik to discuss that
That'll be at the elementary school.
Okay. All right, then, the town solicitors' report?
Also, my Sarah President
Item 12 on our agenda is appointments. I believe there was a reappointment?
Two, two reappointments. I'll make a motion to reappoint to the Conservation Commission David Flanders and Andrew Martinez for terms to expire September of 2018.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And congratulations to those two. Item 13 is new business. And A is a resolution adopting the document entitled Town of South Kingstown Town Council Goals and Objectives, 2014 to 2016 Town Council Term, as a general guidance statement for the council's work program, as shown on Exhibit 1 attached to your agenda. The council further directs that this document be integrated into the town's budget development process for the 2016-2017 fiscal year.
I make a motion that we approve item 13A.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. 13D, all right, is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Cybercom Inc., 90 Colorado Avenue, Warwick, for radio communication equipment upgrades in a total amount not to exceed $17,896, and is further described in a memorandum from the Communications Superintendent to the Town Manager dated July 29, 2015, and entitled Bid Recommendation for Highway, Radio, and Fire Comparator Upgrades.
As noted in the memorandum on this subject from, from Lance Whaley, we need this for the VHF system for Public Services Department, Fire Districts, and Communications Division, and for us to be able to continue to cooperate through the 800 megahertz system that's used for public safety purposes. There's a grant that'll provide 50% of the funding on this project. A quarter of it will be paid of the local share through each of the two fire districts, and the town picking up 50% of that cost. Request the council approval as presented on the agendas tonight.
Great.
Motion to approve Agenda item 13D.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Item 13E is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Shea Concrete Products, 773 Salem Street, Wilmington, Mass., to furnish and install one above-grade precast concrete building for the Water Division, and is described in the contract documents in an amount not to exceed $50,000, including a $2,000 contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated August 14, 2015, and entitled Bid Recommendation Precast Concrete Building. Bid reference number blah, blah, blah.
Three unsolicited bids were forwarded. Only one was, was returned. Two was for the $48,000 plus the $2,000 contingency. The building will be constructed to house the disinfection station that's necessary to boost the residual chlorine levels on the South Shore Water System. This has been part of our capital improvement program for the last couple of years. Hopefully we can get the facility into place this fall.
We hear a motion.
I make a motion to approve item number D, as described on the agenda. E, I'm sorry, E. Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Item 13F is a resolution authorizing an award of Contract to Energy Conservation Inc. of Hanson, Massachusetts, for HVAC improvements at the Public Safety Complex Preventer Proposal dated August 17, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $104,500, including a contingency of $5,955, and is further described in a memorandum from the Police Chief to the Town Manager dated August 18, 2015.
The current HVAC, HVAC system at the Public Safety Building was installed when the building was built in 1998. We're looking for replacements on that at this point. The projected price was $118,000. We're looking at it coming in a little bit less than that at this point. What's important here is that this is a energy management system that will replace the, the building management system that was there from 1998. We expect that we'll also be able to receive a small grant through National Grid as a means of paying toward the project. ECI is the expeditive for National Grid for energy improvements, so we'll be working with them. They will be the contract manager on the project, and we'll manage the subs that are necessary to complete this work. We expect that this should have impact on our operational expenses associated with the police station in the future.
Do we hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve item F on our agenda. Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously as well. And that brings us to item 14 on our agenda, closed executive session, and I have to ask the public to leave at this point. You can choose or not to go home, but you can't stay here.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to go to close the executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A1 to discuss matters pertaining to personnel.
Second.
Steve Alfred.
All right.
Aye.
Council Vice President Haley.
Here.
Councilwoman Clough.
Here.
Councilman Bailey.
Aye.
Unanimous affirmative vote to recess to closed executive session pursuant to RIJL 42-46-5A1 to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, Stephen A. Alfred.